Okay, I think we'll call the meeting to order. And I would start with, with any public or human comment?
No comment.
Okay, thank you. And we will move on to our educational showcase.
Good evening, Diane Towne, the Chair of the Assessment Committee and librarian, we're at FM, so I wanted to share an update on assessment activities with you. Dr. Snyder will also be doing some of this presentation after my piece. Just to prove it, she will be doing a piece in this presentation. Just some general notes about assessment, 21, 22. We're back to full assessment activities, so after COVID and after getting back on campus, we're back to full assessment activities after taking a little bit of a pause. We've explored some different formats to gather assessment data from academic program or through the academic program reviews. We continue to document mature assessments, so at least two cycles of assessment. Assessing something once and then assessing the other again to get a fuller picture of what's happening in that area that's being assessed. We also pilot a assessment in the academic, in the non-instructional side of the academic and student affairs departments and making sure that that form connected strategic plans, all of the objectives to the ability of assessments being done. There's a new SUNY framework out there, so there's some updated general education learning outcome with some updated knowledge slash skills and competencies that need to be addressed in the curriculum. And then the Community College Survey of Student Engagement, the assessment, the assessing, that was last concluded in 2015, and Dr. Snyder will speak more about that later on. Just a graphic about assessment activities here at the college. We assess learning outcome and effectiveness, and those two things get assessed throughout the institution from the course level or the initiative level, the program department or division level, and then of course, the institutional level as well. So a few examples or a couple of examples of course level assessment. So, general education learning outcome, JEL, number six of the known civilizations, was assessed in the humanities this year. It was assessed in history 101 and 102, three sections of those two classes by direct measure in exams, essays, and a research paper. The results of that assessment, 71% of the student sections met or exceeded the current outcome. The goal was actually 75% to meet or exceed. And the interesting thing here, the last time that this skill set was assessed in spring 2018, the 71% of the current year is effectively 17% lower than the previous assessment. And there's a number of different possibilities as to why that is so. So based on this assessment, the department or the instructor in this case came up with an action plan to continue to assess this skill set. Also assessed in humanities was the skill area number 10, basic communication. That was assessed in multiple sections of the English Model 3 and the English Model 4. English Model 3 in fall 2021 and the English, English E N G Model 4 in spring 22. And all types of classes or all type of delivery modes were assessed. So traditional classroom, lead-based classes in college and the high school were included in this assessment. And there are actually five different criteria for this general learning outcome, each assessed separately. So this is just a table, if you will, of the assessment results for the 2021, 22 assessment, the current year. And what you can see is that in all cases, for all five areas in the, in the learning outcome that needed to be assessed through the English Model 3 and Model 4s, 90% or better in each case in learning outcome, those students were meeting or exceeding. Slide is a similar to, actually compares the last time that this outcome was assessed in 2017, 2018, 2018, 2019, and the current assessment. And the interesting thing to note here through those general outcomes in 17, 18, 19, in the 80s, upper 80s, and then like I mentioned earlier, in an improvement in those two assessments to over 90%. So in some cases, it's high of a 14% increase in those goals. Again, through the assessment process, looking at those results and then formulating an action plan. This is the action plan that that pre-humanities vision has for basic communication moving forward. Always, of course, reviewing the curriculum and those communication, those skill sets, to see how they can use them in different ways, them in different ways. Investigate different collective assessment products to see if there's an easier way or a more convenient way to let instructors do this assessment. Continue to communicate assessment expectations to college and high school instructor, making them aware that it is important for them to do this assessment, just like we would out here at, at the college. And then submitting curriculum boards for approval, and this really has to do with that new general education framework, just making sure the curriculum is including those new learning outcomes. At the departmental level, I'm going to show you some examples of assessing effectiveness. The academic and student affairs assessment, okay, so this is the stuff that happens that doesn't happen inside the classroom. It happens outside of the classroom. Again, departments piloted a new submission form, eight different departments, including the library, used that form. The committee will be looking for feedback from these departments, from the people that are, completed these assessments. And then there is the potential to roll this form out to different departments based on the feedback that we, that we received. So one specific or assessment in, in student affairs, the career and transfer services area. Their department goal to maintain close and career and technical center articulation agreements that are equitable, accurate, in support of college access. That departmental goal lines up with two goals in the strategic plan, partnerships and transform. And so, in a previous assessment, they realized that this was primarily handled in the dean's office and that this assessment was to be better handled or is better aligned with the goals of the career and transfer. Responsibility to both these articulation review process was moved to the career and transfer services department from, from the dean's office. So they actually conducted an assessment, and the assessment was to audit the current closely articulation agreements, and what they found was weak agreements and that those, those agreements needed to be updated. And of the, the that are out there with different closely, they found their action plan, their actions moving forward, fine tune the process and keep those agreements updated and organized. Work with other local policies to add parallel to create new agreements and to continue to assess on mature assessment being the family empowerment program. Their departmental goal to provide an equitable college experience for single parent students aligned with four equal partnerships, equitable student experience, global management and training. So their previous assessment identified that providing students with technology and coaching, academic coaching, providing them with resources, gift cards, and that sounds like they can go and buy whatever it is that they want to buy, but helping them buy food or gas or things like that, that actually improved their academic persistence. They track these participants' grades. What they found was in fall 2021, they had 35 students in this program. Spring of 22, they had 30 students in that, in that program, and their target was at least 30 students. Okay, so they met their target in that case. At the close of the spring semester in 2022, 10 students were named to the dean list, four students graduated, 15 students accomplished satisfactory academic progress. And there's some examples on the right-hand side of some of those specific students and their achievements. And then their action plan, this, this grant sunsets in June of this year. So they don't, they want to figure out how to keep these students engaged, how to keep supporting them. They're going to meet with individuals, seek to access those needs and learn from participation in the grant. Collaborate with other opportunity grant, C-Step is, is an example here. Again, just to continue to give them the supports that they, that they need, that they want and that they need after this grant sunsets. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Snyder.
Thank you, Dan. So we're going to talk about this aspect, the Community College Survey of Student Engagement. It was last administered in 2015. Survey we like to do on a three-year to four-year rotation in the spring semester, which would have put it in spring 2020. So we were not going to survey our students during, during COVID at that time. We did make the decision to revisit this survey in spring 2022. And what you'll see is we had about 300 students participate. Most of them were full-time, and it was a paper survey that was completed on campus randomly sampled sections of courses were selected. And what we get from this information is a little bit, if you think back to the pyramid in that very first slide, it's some of the student learning that the students identify themselves, and it's some of the effectiveness of what's going on at the campus. There are many, 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 many questions. It's a bubble sheet and it's large paper and sections. So we thank the students for participating, we thank the faculty for allowing the time to complete the surveys in their classes. So what I'm going to do is just cover a couple of data points to share with you, and I think this one's really important. Why are students attending FMC? What makes them choose us? What are some of their goals that they're trying to accomplish? So you'll see here that the students could select more than one answer, obviously. So we have 80% of them that want to complete an associate's degree. Half of them are looking to transfer to a four-year college. 72% want to obtain job skills or update their job skills. 37% are looking to change their career, and 95% of them intrinsic self-improvement, right? This is what they're coming to college for, to be better. We'll move on. This next slide, there is a data point at the front end of the bullets, and then a parenthetical data point. The parenthetical data point is the national average, the national response. So that's all types of institutions that are at the community college level, so urban, rural, everything. So what we are looking at here is students identifying how they pay for college. So we know a lot of this already, but we don't know where they're getting some extra funds, right? So this tells us, it breaks down for us, what the students have reported. So you'll see as we go down the list, 66% are really using their own savings for their own income because they're working, right? And that's a little bit lower than the national average. A lot of them are leaning into their families and family savings to come to our campus. That's a bit higher than the national average. We're about even with the employer contribution, we're higher with grants. So that tells us that we have a lot of students that are eligible for those brands, that their socioeconomic status is well, right? And it also tells us that typically those students are going to fall into the first generation pool of students. 46% scholarships in comparison to 41, and then student loans 38 to 27. Any question about that?
Is there an age breakdown as far as?
So there is an age break, so students are able to identify some of their own demographics when they complete the survey. It doesn't necessarily drill into every single question, though. It doesn't tell me, for example, in this particular question, 18, 18 to 22-year-olds answered this way. It doesn't, but if the survey will tell me the age of the students that participated, does that make sense?
Clearly, they could check out more than one.
And they
So it's multiples of their own savings, some grant money and scholarships money.
Absolutely, good. And it typically is, it typically is, right? So the next data point there, how much does FMC emphasize the following? Support to succeed relatively even, I think if we go down every single bullet point, we're relatively even in all of these in comparison to the national average. The financial support to afford college, that's a little bit off, but not that much. You know, so we might take something like that, that we think, gosh, that we're off of the national average, or gosh, we thought this might be a little bit higher, and drill into that just a little bit further. So if we go to the next slide, I'll talk about how we use this. So obviously, we compare what the students have told us this year in comparison to previous years. So we want to know what they were thinking pre-COVID. And then to the national results, that, that's the previous slide that we were just talking about. We shared this information with campus stakeholders, sharing it here now with the Board of Trustees, the campus community. We shared internally with our academic divisions, with our student affairs divisions. There are questions that are clearly identified and focused on academic affairs areas, clearly questions that are focused on student affairs. So those reports and data points are sent out to the individuals, the departments, to have those discussions. This is where we get to have the analysis, we get to look at the information and try and determine what's going on, or trying to identify places that we want to work on as an institution, as a department, or maybe an initiative. And the information also informs our decisions. You know, how might we utilize some of this information to impart decisions or make decisions or decide on how we want to perhaps change a process? Look at a system, look at a policy. So that's how we use some of this data. It's not used by itself, so you know, we look for other data as well to support what we're seeing here. We often tend to look for other data that will help us to drill in and figure out what's going on. Okay. Any questions on this, Sessi, at all? Okay. If you do, feel free to reach out. So in 22, 23, these are assessment goals. We want to continue to review the assessment process and the systems that we have in place and improve them as needed. You heard Dan talk about some of the ways in which we're archiving our assessment data, looking at virtual tools, looking at things that we have in-house, Microsoft Form, Google Forms, those types of things are being utilized by our departments and our, and our faculty. The Assessment Committee is looking at the institutional learning outcomes. This has been a multi-year approach to revising the ILOs. We are currently very close, so the Assessment Committee is very close. What we are looking for there is making sure that we are, we have statements and ILOs that not only fit us as an institution, but also meet the expectations of middle states and of SUNY. What is SUNY looking for us to have in our ILOs? So we're currently mapping the draft statements to the, the middle states institutional learning outcomes that they've identified for all campuses that are accredited. The committee is supporting the accreditation self-study process by sharing information. That's how we, our communication flow works with the committees. We have multiple divisions and representatives from different areas of the campus. So they're disseminating that information, and then we are always working on fostering and maintaining a certain with that.
I was wondering if there's something that you have attributed to the cause of the increase in the, in the scoring, like exceeding or meeting going up so substantially? Is it like a better product? Is it something like?
So, so the English faculty have been working on learning outcomes and assessing these learning outcomes for years, for years. As you can see, it went back to 17, 18, it's been going on since the genesis of the place. Because what they have done is they take a look at the aggregate, so they pull all the assessment data together, and they have the discussion, they have the analysis, and they do multiple things. They talk about the assessment tools that they use, they talk about the curriculum-supported textbooks or books or readings or those types of things. So the ongoing conversation allows for each faculty member to some or pieces or nuggets from those conversations and apply them in their classrooms. So that's what you're seeing, is you're seeing the actual analysis and discussion play out in the results of the student learning outcomes. And it's been ongoing, like I said, ongoing conversations and analysis. That's the mature assessment cycle. That's exactly what middle states want, that's what they're going to look for, is are we doing this on a regular routine basis? Are we seeing improvements to teaching and learning inside the classroom? That's a great example of that.
Jackie, did you see any particular modality at that point have a larger uptick than another? So it was referenced that they looked at split of modalities between online, hybrid, and, and classroom.
So at the aggregate level, what they do is they are pulling it all together. They don't identify which number goes with which. So they just identify which modalities are in the aggregate itself. But that certainly is a question that could be drilled into, we definitely could take a look at it.
You don't need to.
Yeah.
I wonder if you did, so.
Yeah, it's a big question. We definitely could update the form in a way that gets it.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for the opportunity to share. Thank you, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
In everyone's packets are the meeting minutes of our last meeting. I entertain a sponsor and a second to improve the meeting. Any discussion for actions, modification? On favor? Motion carries now. Chairman's report will be brief in your packets. You will see a motion for a witness speed of officers. So because Diane Baszett will be leading us at some point this year, we have changed the slate to add a co-secretary, Ray Tamasco. Hopefully you will all have the opportunity to meet her with the buyer tonight or prior, if not. She will be taking over for Diane and working through the transition. So I would like to make a motion that we adopt the president's recommendation and revise the slate of officers for this year, and I would entertain a second. Trustee Perry, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Obstained? Motion carries. We will move on to the president's report.
Okay, I will try to be brief as well. The analyst case may lay the table if I need to. We do have a new chancellor. Chancellor King joined us in early January, and we met recently with the presidents and laid out his priorities for, for SUNY, which are rather broad categories that were already part of, you know, yeah, are what we're doing anyway, but he wanted us to know that he's going to be visiting each and every one of our campuses this spring. He started those campus visits, we do not have a scheduled date yet, but you know, as that gets closer, we'll keep you informed. He likes to come with the students and we'll take the campus tour. I've had a one-on-one conversation with him. He's an engaging person, seems to listen and understand, and certainly he's experienced. For those of you who don't know, he was former Secretary of Education of the Obama administration. He was also Commissioner in New York State Department of Education before he made that move. And so he's got a lot of clear education in New York. We make sure that you all know that our Lady Raiders basketball team has secured the 2023 Mountain Valley Conference title. They are undefeated currently. So they're ranked number five in the nation, and they will be hosting first round of the Region Three tournament next Wednesday. So if you have the opportunity to come out to campus and, and watch the ladies in action, I encourage you to do so. It is an evening game, I believe. Tip-off is 6:00 PM.
Six.
Is, yeah, I think it's six. Our men's basketball team is also doing well. They are 17 and six overall, 10 and four in the conference, and they're ranked 14th in the country. So they'll be entering the postseason tournament as well. We want to extend our congratulations to Josh Wilder, who was recently awarded the 2022 Criminal Justice Scholarship and had the honor of being president, has received that, that award with Sheriff Smith and John Armstrong from Criminal Justice Department. A week or so ago, I think it was last week, the time flies, I was invited to a meeting with Senator Joe Brand in DC, down in the lower quadrant of the SC, there's, there were representatives from 11 New York community colleges that met with the senator. She laid out her priorities for the upcoming legislative year. She talked about potential funding opportunities for community colleges and tried to kind of get a sense of what our priorities are. That was a relatively brief meeting, but the rest of the day I participated in rural day on, on Capitol Hill with, was sponsored by the rural community alliance, and this was roundtable discussions with representatives from various federal agencies that serve particularly rural-serving institutions. And they primarily wanted to talk about what programs they have available to us to, to, us to carry out. You know, we, Department of Labor, for example, we've had funding opportunities from them in the past. You know, we, Department of Labor, for example, we've had funding opportunities from them in the past and been very useful. And of course, we've had support from U S C A and the Department of Education. So made some good connections and heard about some programs that perhaps we weren't familiar with and some potential funding opportunities that will be prescribed. We are in the midst of our 2023 budget development. Just as a reminder to the board, we have been benefiting from federal stimulus funds. Those federal stimulus funds are coming to a close. And even though the governor has proposed funding for, the challenge is the, for set at the lowest enrollment period that we've had really our history, we've had some modest enrollment gains, but if you consider on-campus full-paid students, we are at a level we have not seen since ninety-sixty-five. So it's it's not where we want to be and we hope that we can, you know, we have hit bottom and that can work and begin to crawl out of the abyss that we've been sliding into for the last three or four years.
Greg, you can remind us, if it's the funding floor, is the enrollment set by F T E or headcount?
It's set by F T E. And this slide talks a little bit about, you know, if, if everything, all green lights for, for community colleges, we would be at two thousand and ten funding levels as, as a group. You know, they, they really kind of kept us flat and there's, there's some additional concerns with the governor's proposal, which is language that was shared with us by the chancellor's office last week, that they have in the governor's proposal. She has a twenty percent holdback of base state aid. They threatened us with this before, and in fact, they implemented it. You may remember at the beginning of the pandemic, nineteen twenty, they did a twenty percent holdback. We did eventually get that funding restored, but it was withheld for about half of a year. They're talking about holding back twenty percent again because they want to see a plan develop, because the governor's office wants to see a plan develops. The, the full language talks about a plan that's developed between the governor's office, SUNY, local education leaders, which we presume to mean us, and the division of budget. So this has become an important checkpoint for us when we are discussing this with senators and assembly, members of the assembly. Because obviously this is what the governor is proposing and there's, there are lots of negotiation left to, to go before a state budget is, is arrived at. And you certainly don't want to see twenty percent of our base state aid withheld.
The big uncertainty there is that there doesn't soon be any trigger for receiving.
That's correct.
So, yeah. At least at this point, you see that it's just fairly ambiguous.
And, and it could be, as, as they've looked at these sorts of things in the past, and then I think I mentioned this to, to you in my written report, that this could be a way of them implementing a certain portion of performance-based funding. So it allows the governor to say that she's keeping us whole, but in reality, not keeping us whole. And, you know, the unfortunate thing is the institutions of our size are much less able to absorb this kind of impact than some of our larger sister institutions. So we certainly hope that that language is removed completely, if, if the word were modified considerably. That the bottom bullet there about the seventy-five million dollar transformational initiatives. This year was sixty million. That was actually put in by the legislature, not the governor, but the governor saying, I see your sixty and I'm raising it fifteen. That applies to the whole system. But again, that, those dollars are not targeted toward operating expenses. They are more strategic initiatives that are designed to make the institution stronger, but not to support them. And, you know, it, it's a great theory and we certainly aren't going to turn that, those dollars away. But it's, it's really hard for us to focus on, you know, becoming excellent or struggling just to maintain base operating expenses. So it could be more appreciated if they pumped that seventy-five million dollars in the base aid and gave everybody more.
Can you use any of those transformation funds for something like, you know, you wouldn't need or need to, but could you use it for capital project? Like increasing access to telecourse work? Replacing infrastructure that's related to that kind of technology?
So the way that the, yes. That's a possibility. If, if they follow the same pattern as they did this year, we have to submit a plan. And, you know, they, they review it and then they approve the funding.
Unfortunately, seventy-five million dollars press system is not very much.
Yeah, for us, it was, you know, we received a little over four hundred thousand. So.
But that's hard to translate.
And then the other issue that, you know, where we certainly would do that is, is there's no, when we talk about capital match, we usually like to get a match. You can't match a great dollar to state dollar. So, you know, we could do that, but we, we would be bearing the full cost of that.
Greg, so can you talk about the, you want to talk about shared services for other colleges?
You know, there isn't, we, we, we are reading between the lines of this supposed command is supposed to do. But there's really no language about it. And the chancellor's office didn't have a lot of information about what the governor's office intends with that. But there, there isn't a lot of discussion of that now. Just to update you a little bit on the F C A, we haven't talked about it in a while, but we get ever closer to hopefully putting our relationship with the U S D A to bed. We have submitted all the forms required for debt relief. By the U S D A, we had a conference call with them a couple of weeks ago. We answered some, some additional questions, submitted some additional supporting clarifying information. And the indications that we received from the phone call is that certainly they were supportive of our application for debt relief. It now goes to the director of world development for their approval. Indications are that it's going to happen, hasn't happened yet, and we're hopeful. We're very pleased that on-campus dining has returned to the spring twenty twenty-three semester. The X Kitchen has been going strong. One of our food truck vendors from the fall approached us in, in the late fall semester and asked if she could bring her operation indoors. And so far, so good. It seems like she's busy. She's been catering. She's served the basketball game the other night, concessions for them. So it, it seems to be off to a good start and it's, it's a nice addition. We'd like to have that for our students to staff on campus.
Greg, what's the X Kitchen?
The X Kitchen is, is the, the name of part of the Indian stations dining complex. So, so it's, it used to be the Mohawk Run.
Okay.
If that helps, it's on the far west end of the Indian. Our, the F C A also contracts with bookstore operations with Ballitt, and that contract is coming to a close. I think they are a three-year contract. So we are in the midst of contract negotiations with Ballitt for continuing to own a bookstore. They seem very pleased with the, the operation we have here. We, we have been happy with them, so we'll continue to look forward to that. That ends the slides that I had prepared. Happy to answer any questions about those or anything else that's on your mind.
Our student trustee is not here tonight, so we will move on to those, our Leslie Lancy with the foundation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have too much else to offer. I did want to add to Greg's comments about the X Kitchen is that she is open to the public and does do brunch on Sundays. And she was very successful the first couple of Sundays. So when I hear it's lovely, it was on Facebook, that was great. So if anybody's interested, she's, she's doing that as well. Only additions to my report is we, the foundation is going to be in honor of our sixtieth anniversary of the FM's sixtieth anniversary buying fleece zip-ups for the two boards, and we will be buying zip-ups for the entire campus that will be celebrated on April sixth. But we would like to host a sixtieth dinner celebration on March sixteenth, the night of the next board of trustees meeting. Minion Hall will be catering it and Greg had mentioned maybe we'd start the meeting at five and we'd have dinner at six on that evening. So mark your calendars for March sixteenth and make sure you give Maria your size for your fleece. But we will also, the, the new logo will be on your new shirt, zip-up. So that'll be a great thing. We, the only thing added to the solar farm issue is it states that we are no longer in a lease agreement with Hikati. I'm looking at other options right now. Brent had a place from Judithia Realty sits on the foundation board, and he is presently doing a market assessment for me on that property. I have had it, the foundation has had it sterling, it's all been assessed, environmental surveys have been done on it. So we will see where we go with that. And one of these days, I'm going to get boots on and go over here to this solar project and see what, what they're doing over there with the little muddy. I was going to go there today. Well, I was like, nah, I don't think so. High heels, so.
If you do that, take it, please.
And, and also I did put in this report that, of course, we're continuing looking for donors and strategizing for the multi-use turf fields. And so we're, we're working on that presently. And then we're also getting, preparing a proposal for our C N A lab to go to the Johnson Hospital Foundation. So anyway, so that concludes my report. Unless anyone has any questions, your golf brochures are here. So take a look. We've got a huge influx of support today. So that was a good one. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Winsman was not able to join us tonight, so trustee will throw a role. Give us the finance report.
Okay, so in your packet, we included expense graphs, there are two graphs, one presented, one that provides expense and budget data by major function. And another that provides a second budget data by contracted services category. And those graphs compare data for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. And fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three. We also included an expense summary budget versus actual for the period of nine, one, twenty-two to one, thirty-one, twenty-three. That covers forty-two percent of the fiscal year and to date, actual expenses and, and the coverages are at thirty-eight percent of budget. Expense detail by department was also provided covering the period of nine, one, twenty-two to one, thirty-one, twenty-three. Again, forty-two percent of the fiscal year. Finance statement for the period of nine, one, twenty-two to twelve, thirty-one, twenty-two was provided, which covers thirty-three percent of the fiscal year. That included revenue for billing activity through the end of December and included fall twenty-two, winter twenty-three, and spring twenty-three semester. This represents ninety-four point five percent of emergency budget, while expenses incurred represent four months, forty-nine point seven percent of the budget. We also included information in regards to budget transfers, contracts, and grants that were completed in the month of January. And I also did include a board motion for two budget transfers that would require your grant approval. And these both involved full-time staff salary. The first is a transfer from the institutional research department in the amount of eighteen thousand dollars. And it goes back over to the institutional advancement department. And then the second one is from admissions and the amount of twenty-one thousand dollars going over to the institutional advancement department for twenty-one thousand dollars. So this is for salary for, for one of the employees that just joined the college. So we need a sponsor for the motion for the budget transfers. Let's teach you how it's signed by trustee Landry, Landry. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you. We will move on to building of grounds with trustee Landry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a brief report, your written report in your packet outlines some of the activities that are being taken place. For instance, training that started the work down the H B A replacement units. Part of the capital projects of twenty twenty-two, the controls that are currently being placed. Also, Scott Marshall, President, had met with J and Z engineers, and they are in the process of doing a cost study that will fund the basis for the next master. We do have one item on the agenda that we need to have approved by the board this evening. Background, there are several classroom finishings items that are no longer used that the college deems better option. These items are considered to have minimum worth, given the age and condition of the finishings. I recommend the method of sale is for an online auction with no minimum bid. Auctions International, East or in York specializes in selling government admissible surplus items and has been used by the college in the past. This is in the form of a motion. The president recommends that the board of trustees approve the use of auctions international for the online auction process with no minimum bid and authorized by the president to include the sale. Sale transactions. That was in the file very much.
Do you have a second? Just to be thorough, Matt, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Moving on to academic affairs with trustee Gordan.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair, and hello to all of you. Like to give a shout out to Dr. Snyder and to Dan Town for wonderful and very comprehensive, but also easy for us to, to understand, update on the assessment. Just goes to show certainly that our system of having educational showcases are very important for the board to keep apprised of certain things that are going on throughout the year. I would like to also mention in terms of academics that Provost Putnam has been working with, coordinating with the division chairs for the review of the general education framework, which of course includes many, many courses. And in your packet under academic affairs, should you be so inclined, on pages one to three of her report, there is a listing of all those that have been revised and some that have to be deactivated. But, you know, all of this goes on, obviously, to keep us in good shape with our curriculum and to have students have the best combination of courses at their disposal. Tonight, we're going to focus on some individuals rather than some of the programs. Some of the programs are in, coming along and probably more detail in March on a few major initiatives that are underway. So in keeping with that, I'd like to mention that Dan Fogarty has been elected to the Fulton Montgomery Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, excuse me, for two thousand twenty-three. And that in that role, he certainly has an interest in supporting the chamber and showing how the college can be a major part of the attraction of business and individuals' residence to come to this area to live. Provost, Provost Putnam led a team to meet with Provost of St. Rose. And that team from F M included Erica Guyer, Andreas Grigner, and Dan Fogarty. And we're in the initial stages of, of talking about expanding the partnership with St. Rose. talking about expanding the partnership with St. Rose. Because of the teacher shortage, there's a great interest on our part and on their part in seeing how we might further the educational opportunities of students who are interested in, uh, pursuing the field of education. So, uh, we hope to be growing more of our own to come back here to teach and there'll be more information on that as the program unfolds. Anthony Krolkowski, who, uh, was an intern with the State Senate um, in communications was hired by Channel Ten News, uh, because of the internship that he had there. So he's already had some broadcasts. And, uh, there's a link to this initial broadcast in, I think it was in the January, excuse me, academic affairs. Human Services Julie Lindt, the, uh, Assistant Professor in that program, uh, Foundations of Addiction. I chose to highlight one of many projects that she engaged her students in, and that was, um, a student group, two different student groups on, had Narcan training and they presented, one group presented the Narcan training to fifteen students at FMCC. And then another group in that class presented to twenty-two community, uh, members at the Glover'sville Recovery Center. And, uh, each of the students in the course was given two, uh, doses of Narcan to use should they run into a situation where someone's life has been, uh, is, is certainly being threatened. So that's, there were many important projects, but I thought you might be interested particularly in that one. From the world of Rad Tech, uh, Carolyn Lebait was the keynote speaker at the Nov- November Assert, which is the Association of Rad Tech Colleges Conference in Nevada. You know, she goes to this with her students every year, but she was keynote. So a shout out to her and I'm sure they had a wonderfully inspiring and informative, um, keynote. Kyle Persley, an FMCC two thousand seventeen alum was one of three national award winners of what they call I am the gold standard. Now Kyle went on from FM to finish an MS in Dosimetry at a college in Indiana. And, um, the gold standard has many criteria that involve, of course, all focused on patient and institutional effectiveness to protect patients and to find the best uh, radiologic treatment plan for them as they face whatever disease they are confronting. So good for Kyle Persley and for our involvement with him. Congratulations to Ella Fountain, a senior, um. Yes, she's been hired, uh, and, uh, Missy Schneiderman, also I believe a senior, Ella was hired for, uh, uh, a position at, uh, St. Peters. And Missy Schneiderman is going to be given an, uh, assistant so that she can give back, uh, some employment and in exchange at Albany Med for assistance in, in pursuing her program. Hannah Hoffman, there's an interesting piece on a senior in Rad Tech also who was, uh, recruited to be the modeling, um, person in a video, uh, presented or produced, excuse me, by a Rad Tech credits, uh, company. Lazar Lazarowski is the president of this company. He came on campus. Uh, she is Hannah Hoffman was the positioning model for the ready, radiographic procedures. And these features and her pictures will be in the textbook that he is developing. So shout out to us for that as well. And his comment, I just wanted to read you was, I recently had the opportunity to collaborate with Catherine Lebait and one of her students Hannah on a project to put a positioning and procedures textbook together. Working with them was an incredibly easy and efficient experience. Carolyn was very hospitable to me during my time at the college. Hannah was easy to work with and very accommodating and helping us complete the project. So he sends great thanks and kudos to us. And that on all those positive notes, um, ends the academic affairs report for this meeting. Thank you.
We will move on to student affairs with trustee.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair. And again, thank you, Dr. Snyder, for, um, a great report for January and February. Enrollment update for spring twenty twenty-three, FM has thirteen hundred forty-seven students that represents eight hundred fourteen point nine full-time equivalent students. And the highlights of the, uh, student, uh, affairs, uh, student engagement at the Commons is, uh, the first area. For fall semester twenty-two introduced into the campus, a refined space in the library building called the Commons. The vision for the renovated area was provide a space that align with the strategic plan. Specifically goal to the equitable student experience where the college is focused on connecting, fostering meaningful relationships to build a sense of belonging for all students. Commons is designed for students to access tutoring, study space, accessibility services, writing center assistance, and to build connection with FMCC's success coaches. End of the year semester survey was sent to all enrolled students. Um, reflecting on their engagement with the new student-centered spaces and services. One hundred and one responses were received. Ninety-nine percent of the students responded favorably about the welcoming atmosphere of the Commons and the library building. Information from the open-ended responses will be used to develop programming and initiatives with the coming semesters. In the mental health counseling area, Fulton Montgomery Community College's new part-time mental health counselor, Michael Wasco, came on board at the end of the fall semester. He was available for in-person appointments with students on Monday and Tuesday from nine to three P M. And also offered remote appointments at all other times, including, uh, weekends and, uh, evening appointments. Arranged with the students directly. Michael is a New York State Health and, uh, licensed mental health counselor and substance abuse counselor. Over twenty years as a clinician, uh, Michael, uh, has maintained a high level of commitment to providing services to others. His approach to therapy is in integrative as he takes a student-directed evidence-based approach. So students are active participants, a therapeutic process he brings to FMCC of that amount of experience working in settings such as college counseling centers, emergency departments, not-for-profit organization. Our counselor will be on campus three days during the spring semester and available remotely by appointment. In the library, fall was the first semester with a newly configured library space in the victim. All areas on the second floor have been seen and in use. Initial indications shows, show students are satisfied with the new layout. Seventy-eight point two percent, seventy-nine students of one hundred and one students that responded to the recent survey indicated they are satisfied with the atmosphere on the second floor. Ten point nine percent had a neutral view of the second floor and only one percent indicated dissatisfaction. Nine point nine indicated they did not utilize the second floor at all this semester. And since nine point nine, uh, percent of a hundred and one respondents, roughly one in ten students not utilizing the space and services on the second floor, the staff will look for ways to engage and encourage students to take advantage of those spaces and services. The plan is to continue to evaluate the space and its use and to adjust based on those observations and continued feedback. And the collegiate science and technology entry program, C-Step, Dr. Gregory Young started as the C-Step step director in December and FMCC's new C-Step specialist will begin next week. Andrea Andrea Hernicle has a strong math and science background, education and years of experience with unrepresented students in her previous position as an adult educator with, uh, HFAM Bozies. The purpose of C-Step is to increase the number of students who are pursuing professional licensure. FMCC's C-Step program provides academic enrichment opportunities to support student success. Madam Chair, this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
We'll move on to diversity, equity and inclusion.
Yes, thanks. Okay. Well, diversity, equity, inclusion council met for the first time this semester and, um, we just actually, uh, Dan Town, uh, put together the showing, uh, I am not your Negro, which was shown Wednesday and Thursday in the library, which was a nice thing to see. Uh, we've been focusing a lot on, um, Black History Month, trying to raise awareness in the class. You got my big long calendar of events. That is to do a lot of different things. I was kind of going through it one night. Uh, so we hit that to the diversity council. So they, um, have an opportunity to choose some things to focus on if they want to. Uh, let's see. Oh, uh, the end, Pratt's doing a really nice job. And one of the things we have coming in is a speaker on March first, Mills Rogers. And he's gonna talk about, uh, let's see, being a champion and an ally. Uh, it's basically a presentation related to leadership and service coming from a perspective of diversity, equity and inclusion. Should be interesting. Hey, you're welcome to attend, you know, try and get, um, as many students as we can to get to go to that one. Uh, let's see, spotlighting Black History, we're doing that, um. Oh, I met with Gregory Young, let's see, that haven't come into classes. It's a nice thing. It's nice to see their program filled again, um, to really encourage people to do what I didn't do, use the services that a college provides, um, to help support, which I think is really a nice thing to do and also fits in nicely with the social emotional approach to, um, education. Um, I talked to the student sen- uh, senate about the attending diversity, equity and inclusion council. Uh, we actually got, uh, two students, our last meeting, which is nice to see, because they're really going to be the ones who, uh, drive this. I have to talk to the college senate about, um, diversity and interdisciplinary collaboration coming up shortly. Uh, continue to meet with Greg as needed. And we had a really interesting experience with, um, a student who, uh, I was talking about the earthquake in Turkey and what had happened. And one of the students happened to be from Syria. So we're gonna talk a little bit and, um, she got involved with PTK and now PTK is, uh, we talked about providing some aid because I know a lot of difficulty in particular getting into Syria. But, uh, PTK is, um, like leading this at this point, they approach a thing, Peace Club, uh, who was students of the world and nursing, we're gonna do a bit of a fundraiser for that, which I think is a really positive thing, uh, particularly, it was really interesting to see a student who actually had family members there, uh, and who was really concerned about what was going on. So we'd be able to provide some support for her. Um, and I'm gonna continue to try and change some culture by, uh, attempting to get people to take a look, a closer look at things like nonviolent communication, have actually listened to people because there's uh, presentations and activities are one thing. I mean, getting people in a room together is really important, but also being able to be present and listen to people. Uh, I think is really super important at this point. So that's the brief. Lisa, oh, and next month is Women's History. Thanks. We'll be playing some things with that. That's it.
So the continuation of the chat was better.
All right. Thank you. Um, we had our virtual visit with Dr. Hawk, uh, at the end of January when I stayed with myself, uh, Dan Town and Scott for the tri-fairs. We had a draft of the self-study design to share with them, which covered the priorities that we want to focus on as an institution, uh, the outcomes, a draft of our outcomes. Um, we talked about approaching this all study through a standard-based approach, meaning that we will address all seven of the standards. Um, it allows the option for you to focus on one of priorities-based approach. Um, that tends to be a little bit more difficult for institutions. We traditionally have done a standards-based approach, so are choosing to maintain that same model for this self-study. Um, we talked about, um, the type of peer evaluators that we might want on our team, what types of institutions they might come from. Um, talked about the chair, who we might, you know, really want to focus on not names, but what types of institutions they come from. Um, so it was a really positive, uh, good conversation. We identified the date of May third for his onsite campus visit. Um, and the purpose of that visit is to meet with different stakeholders, different constituents of the campus and to go over the self-study process. Answering the questions that they may have. Um, he did mention meeting with the board, meeting with the Board of Trustees, but it doesn't need to be the full board. It can be a representation of the board. So I asked that you pencil in May third, um, on your calendars. We do not have the agenda set yet. Uh, when I agree that certainly will be shared with the campus community. Um, and then think about who may want to be present to meet with, uh, Dr. Hawk. Any questions? Okay, I can put very important.
Thank you. First, now with trustee Jazz with.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have an addition to the staff, um, Gabrielle Gabby Albridge. She started, uh, January twenty-first, twenty-fourth, rather, as a recruitment coordinator, communications specialist in administration department. Gabby is an MCC graduate. She works at a, as a student ambassador recruiter while she obtained her associate's degree, communication and broadcast media. She later earned her Bachelor of Science in Journalism on SUNY Dupont. Gabby began her career as a social media coordinator at Lee Newspaper. She was also a sales development representative at Breed Safe Indoor and Foster Spa. Her most recent position was communications and marketing coordinator at Westmere Farm in Creamery in Johnstown. Um, we also have, uh, some searches in progress for a C-Step specialist full-time grant, you grant funded. Um, she, uh, step specialist full-time and grant-funded institutional research analysis uh, full-time as well. And that concludes my report unless there's any questions.
Thank you. Moving on, trustee Perry.
Okay, as you find in your packet, we have two policies, uh, that have been revised, um, for us to review. The first revised policy is, um, policy eighty-ten, our college vehicles policy. And then the second policy is the enrollment and online platform. Uh, both of those are in your packet. A review and any discussion we have on that.
We'll have a lot of.
And next month.
Is there any other business to come before the board during the regular meeting tonight?
Yeah, we're thinking because we're planning to do the audit, uh, presentation to the board next month, but that we both started at four thirty because of the dinner. Six, just to give the auditors time, I can be timing the auditors. Uh, unless that board feels the pass.
And, um, just if you're not going to attend, if you want us to know that you wouldn't be there for us. Thank you. Do you believe that we need to have an executive session with you? There are some updates to be provided to the board that relate to some collective bargaining issues? I do not anticipate that there will be any business to transact after the executive session, so no one needs to say. I do need a motion to go into executive session. Trustee pack, uh, second, that just to start with, all in favor? Okay, we're gonna shut up the recording and give everybody a.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all favor.
All right.
We adjourned at seven oh two. And you'll send the hours for the campaign.
I will.